...of greed and a lack of consideration on life, on us. Where does this take us? And I know there's fracking, I've heard about that too, how that pushes, helps push the oil in a direction where they want to gather it. I don't know how much of that is done with the uranium process, but there's too many things. And yes, we need to bind together, we need to speak up. And I pray that God will intervene for every one of us. And I intend to live here the rest of my life in the hills, no matter what. So I thank you for hearing my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming to give us an opportunity to express our concerns and update us on this process. My name is Kathy Sutherland. I live in Hot Springs. And you already know, probably more than all of us put together, because you've seen the research, you've seen the proposal, you've seen the science. I'm perplexed, actually, to see in this, one of the reconsiderations, that we're being asked in the second permit for deep injection wells that will be used to dispose of the processed waste fluids into the Minnalausa Formation after treatment to meet radioactive waste and hazard waste standards. How can anyone ask us to agree to that? We have no way to get it out if it's contaminated. It's proven, it's fact, and you know that. Why would we jeopardize our water for the uranium ore that's coming out of this process? We will never get it back to the purity we have right now. That's a given. We are common people, as you see, we cannot drill new wells into the Madison, which, depending on what you believe and what science may prove, there'll be contamination between aquifers. My drinking water comes from the Minnalausa. I know a lot of people, and even our city, the region, depend on these aquifers. Even the Inian Kara, there are people that domestic use is taken out of that. I can't imagine that we are even having this conversation anymore. We really need you to watch out for us. Our state is not one of the richer states. As you can see, we still have waste from previous mining of uranium. We had flooding where we still have toxic ponds in that area. No one from our state went out to see if those ponds poured into our creeks that go into the Cheyenne, that go into Angastora Reservoir, and onto other people that come down that water. This is too important, and I would not want to be in your shoes, but I ask you, please, because of all the uncertainties, all the questions, we don't have answers to, please do not mess with Mother Nature, because we don't know how it will play out. And please, please, do not inject anything ever into our aquifers. Thank you.
Speaker seven, eight, and nine are off. Speaker seven could go directly to one of the two mics, and eight and nine can wait in the chairs.
You took a wonderful job, so you're just too much.
My name is Mary Helen Peterson. And that's Peterson, not Peterson.
Could you speak louder? We can't hear you.
Closer to the mic.
Okay. Did you get my name?
No.
Okay. I want to start out with this quote. Humankind has not woven the web of life. We are but one thread within it. Whatever we do to the web, we do to ourselves. All things are bound together. All things connect. Chief Seattle Duamish. I'm sure there's no one that can speak that language anymore, because they were, tried to annihilate all of them, tried to make them white people, tried all those kind of things. But I'm here to talk about our water, because it is all about the water. That's why we are protesting so far. How dare you come in here and say you're going to pollute the two aquifers that is above the Madison? There are people still depending on those aquifers, no matter what kind of science you try to put out there. And you guys were formed to protect us from corporations. Now they're running the country, and they're going to, you know what, I know what you think of us, we're just collateral damage, you know, for the best of the good, and that means only rich people, very rich people. And you want to kill us off like you did the Indians, but the Indians didn't go away. We're not going to go away. We're going to fight you to death for our water. Just leave it alone. I copied every comment that was made in your last public things, and I counted up, and there was only about 3% that was for giving these permits out. Ninety-seven of them all wanted to leave our water alone. And yet you took it upon yourselves to issue two permits for Power Tech in, when did you do, August? Not even notifying us. How can you believe that the people living in the Black Hills, and like everybody else mentioned, the water here goes in the Cheyenne, the Cheyenne goes in the Missouri, the Missouri goes in the Mississippi, and then it goes down to the close. This affects everybody in this country, and you cannot sit there and claim that we are just collateral damage, because we happen to live here. I know your maps and the stuff that you dig up from a long time ago show that nobody's living here, that's what you think, but there's a lot of people living here. We had very little time to gather all our documents, but I have them on print. So if you've deleted them from your computer, I'll give them to you.
Speaker number eight, and then one more.
Hello. My name is Nikki, this is Lauren. Can you hear it?
Could you speak louder?
Hello?
My name is Nikki Aberesque Pipehead. And I came here from Ollala, South Dakota, and we're here to talk about the water and the reason why I have information about what happened many years ago when my father, James Aberesque, was in the US Senate. And the uranium companies came in to the New Underwood Edgemont area and drilled and mined, and the people in South Dakota and the federal government ended up cleaning some of that up, a lot of it was not cleaned up, it was just left there. And the boreholes that were made recently have not been filled by the Azarga company from the damage that they have done, because no one has done that historically. And it's good to have a historic perspective from both angles. I also came here to speak on behalf of my family. My husband is Doyle Pipehead, and he is the great-great-grandson of Chief Bigfoot, who is also known as Spatael, or preferred to be called Spatael. And he perished at Wooten Knee. And the reason why these things happened to him and to his people, the 300 people that were massacred then, was the fact that they discovered gold in the hills at the time, in the Black Hills. But there was also a treaty that was made, and he was one of the ones that helped sign the treaty amongst the many others that were there. But one of the things that I do find interesting is that the treaties are sacred contracts. They're sacred contracts with other countries that we have, by the way, never broken with other countries, and we must not break that down, because it is a sacred contract, and it is protected by the United States government. And we are the EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency, which has historically done fairly good work. But lately, because of the political situation, nothing has happened lately, because they are changing the laws one by one. But one of the laws that are so sacred are that our waters are protected, because we can't drink anything else. We can't live, we cannot survive, we cannot grow food, because uranium goes into everything, it permeates scientifically into everything. They find it in the plants, they find it in the animals. We cannot eat a piece of liver, because all that uranium dust is in there. And it permeates in our bodies, and it turns into cancer. And we do not want to perish this way again. So please, respect those treaties and respect the Native American ways. Thank you.
Speaker nine, available?
Yeah. My name is Lindsey McLean, and I am an environmental biochemist in toxicology for the last 42 years. Born and raised in Flint, Michigan, I am well acquainted with environmental contamination of all kinds. On Dewey Burdock, two years ago, we had a turnout for your EPA hearing of about 1,400 people who overwhelmingly protested this ridiculous uranium mining and hazardous waste deposition project. Now you have the audacity to come back here and even worse permit to try and shove it down our throats again. You have ignored the science, you have ignored the science on geology, hydrology, toxicology, and the need for uranium testing and wastewater levels for a classified injection well. And some of that ignored science is documented science that I submitted as a federal expert witness. The request for the still ridiculous number of waste injection wells, with two, I assume, still needed right away, coupled with the years off of any probability of actual mining due to the lack of finances, the lack of a correct NEPA survey, the lack of any closure of those nearly 8,000 old boreholes in an already thoroughly explored site that was twice abandoned and documented by the TBA as having no recoverable uranium. And this just screams that this project is just a cover for a hazardous waste dump site. You have removed any monitor wells down gradient from the site, even for post-restation, which indicates that there will be no need for any restoration, as this is truly just a toxic waste dump. Our DNR has stated that there are several thousand Minnalausa wells down gradient and many more where the aquifer is unknown in current use. Yet you told me in person that no one lives there. I beg your pardon. You never checked, you never did any survey of what or who actually lives down gradient. No compliance monitoring really means the EPA just doesn't give a damn about the people there. And you require no other aquifer to be tested either or monitored? You must not be concerned at all about the toxic plumes? There are literally thousands of violations each year by injection well operators in the US, as they overpressure, overinject, and crack casings, and with no oversight, they just keep on pumping. EPA throws us a bone, with injection fluid is limited to waste fluids from Dewey Burdock. However, EPA administrators have said to me personally that there is zero oversight for these class five wells, and that they essentially approve the wells and then just step back out of the picture. So apparently, this little specification is just for looks, to quiet the public outrage that came out in the 2017 hearings about this subject. Power Tech Azarga promises to clean their wastewater up to class five regs, but again, no oversight to see if they actually can do that. If they were actually able to clean it, then that water would be most valuable for agriculture, irrigation, and farm use in this high-dry area of the country, and they could sell it, and an expensive waste injection well would not even be needed. Oh, and about those Madison wells promised for those who live in the area and will be impacted? You took away that requirement too. So all those who lose their wells to contamination are just SOL. There is a huge black market in hazardous waste in the US that you think we don't know about with injection wells. So with all the curtains now pulled down, let's call this fake mining project really what it is, just a cover for a hazardous waste dump site in the Black Hills, where they could sell the hazardous waste permits to anybody else, even if nobody ever mines any uranium. Thank you.
Speaker ten, eleven, and twelve. Speaker ten could go directly to one of these mics, and eleven and twelve could sit in the chairs next to the stairs. Thank you.
Members of the EPA, my name is Kim Kraft. I'm here today to reiterate some of the problems of allowing issuance of a permit to Power Tech Azarga to inject mining wastewater into the aquifers in the Dewey Burdock area. Following the NRC hearings, Power Tech has not complied with the requirements, or even started with the NRC recommended requirements. Hundreds of boreholes or thousands in the area have not been adequately plugged, or if they were, it was not done sufficiently to conform to any contamination. Originally, the request was for one injection well. It has risen to include up to eight wells. The history of in situ mining industry has been full of lies, deception, and failures to mitigate the damage done by these techniques, either by lack of finances, lack of responsible cleanup, or the ability to do so, thus leaving a history of illness and cancer in the surrounding communities caused by runoff or leakage of the wastewater into drinking water. The request for an area that does not comply with EPA regulations concerning mine wastewater disposal. There are no crystalline rock layers to contain the waste. The layers are sedimentary limestone or sandstone. They are prone to fissures and cracks that connect the other layers and aquifers. The Dewey Burdock area is also close to Jewel Cave National Monument, which has been found to have links to the Wind Cave National Park complex. This is a vast area covering thousands of square miles of water pathways, and we don't have the complete story or nature of connectivity, or only a few tests or limited analysis doesn't tell us that the story of the long-term impact of wastewater contamination. The water is in an area, just doesn't sit there. There is a constant movement of water as rainfall increases and decreases. It might take years, but the water has to go somewhere. That is, what is done today to the aquifers will affect the children, people of the future, who will, and who will finance this, the mitigation cost? The community can't cover it. Cover the extreme costs as needed, and who is to benefit from this venture? A few people on site, but almost no one in the area. Mostly foreign countries, entities will receive any revenue or even some product from it. Our nuclear needs are already, have more uranium than they will need, and the nuclear energy demand is decreasing. It's too expensive to even use or build. The Black Hills will bear the brunt of the contamination. Ranchers, indigenous people, tourists, and sports people will have to deal with it in the future. This is treaty territory, and it must be protected from the onslaught as mandated by law. The history of the EPA is to protect the environment and the people, to uphold the law and not to allow big business to run roughshod over it. We are depending on you to protect us from big money destroying our livelihood from future destruction. Don't give the permits to them outside, to the outside interests. Thank you.
Good morning, relatives. Good morning, Your Honor, delegates of the EPA. We appreciate you coming today to hear our voice. I bring representatives of our community, of our family, with us today, Riot and Casey Cat. And we're here today to talk about the rule of law. You're holding this hearing because it's the rule of law that you provide this time for community impacted by Power Tech's proposed uranium mining in the Black Hills. And I'm here today to speak about our right as Americans to exercise our First Amendment rights in all situations. And we are not riot boosters, as Governor Noem would like to label those of us who are here to protect our environment and our water. We are not riot busters. We are law-abiding, legal citizens of this nation, of this country, and we are in Lakota Territory. So what I want to say today is that we are going to show up at these uranium mines. We are going to show up on the front lines of the Trans-Canada Pipeline, and we are going to exercise our First Amendment rights lawfully and to the full extent of those rights, regardless of the militarized police that may be put in front of us, regardless of the 10 years, 100 years, 50 years, whatever it is that they're trying to label us as domestic terrorists. No, we're not. Again, we are law-abiding citizens, and we expect that the EPA recognize the rule of law. Part of that rule of law is to protect our sacred sites in the Black Hills. Part of that rule of law is to acknowledge that the Lakota treaties of 1858 and 1868 are legal and binding to this day. So before we acknowledge water be allocated to Power Tech or Comico or to Trans-Canada, we need to recognize the rule of law states that this water underneath you is Lakota water. Is Lakota water? Is Lakota water? So you can send your militarized police, you can send them, we'll be there with these children, with our grandparents, with our elders, and with our neighbors. So I'm here today to say that we respect the rule of law, but we want you to respect your own laws, your own laws that have been broken over and over again for the sake of foreign companies, for foreign shareholders that don't even live in our community. In the 1980s, my mom and my dad, they stood up here and they talked about these same things, this encroachment of the extraction industry in our Black Hills. And yet here we are again. And we should be encouraged that they chased those 40 mining companies out of the Black Hills at that time, and we're looking to do that again with the rule of law. Thank you, relatives, for your time.
Andrew Cat, C-A-T-T, Iron Shell.
Speaker twelve, available?
Hello?
Morning.
My name is Sarah Mars, and I'm here from Ollala. I have been hearing about the Black Hills most of my life. I grew up in Washington, DC, and sitting next to me here is Nikki Aberesque Pipehead, who is my best lifelong friend. And when her father was a senator from South Dakota, I used to come and visit South Dakota, and I always knew that one day I would like to live here, because it was so pure, and the water was so clear, and I was always told how sacred and special the Black Hills were to the Lakota, that they were considered the heart of Mother Earth. I have moved to Ollala, and now I am heartbroken that the water is being polluted. I'm already hearing that we should not eat the fish, and people shouldn't fish, that there's already tainted uranium, and many others have talked about the holes that have not been capped, the proof of the water already not being pure enough for well water, not being done properly. There are others that have said better than I, all that was not proven. But let me just say, for me, an American citizen who is turning 65 next month, who is... Andrew Cat C A T T Ironshell.
Hello?
Morning.
Morning. My name is Sarah Mars and I'm here from Ola. I have been hearing about Black Hills most of my life. I grew up in Washington, D.C. And sitting next to me here is Nikki Adress, pipeline head, who is my best lifelong friend. And when her father was a senator from South Dakota, I used to come and visit in South Dakota. And I always knew that one day I would like to live here because it was so pure and the water was so clear. And I was always told how sacred and special the Black Hills were to the Lakota, that they were considered the heart of Mother Earth. I have moved to Ola and now I am heartbroken that the water is being polluted. I'm already hearing that we should not eat the fish and people shouldn't fish, that there's already tainted uranium. And many others have talked about the holes that have not been capped, the proof of the water already not being pure enough for well water, not being done properly. There are others that have said better than I, all that was not proven. But let me just say, for me, an American citizen who is turning 65 next month, who was one of the biggest student organizers of the first Earth Day, that my heart is broken that the EPA was the ones that were supposed to protect our sacred lands and our waters, especially our waters, which do not unplute once they've been tainted with something like uranium. And I've taken geology, I'm not a geologist, but I was originally a physical science major. And we have no proof of what really goes on in the water shells and the underground flow and what can flow into what. But I know that the EPA, which you were my heroes growing up, were not made, were not formed to protect a foreign business and not the sacred lands. And I also know that this water is Lakota water. The Black Hills, it does belong to the Lakotas. And certainly by any treaty that the government is supposed to honor as a sacred trust, that this is not proper. And none of the protections and real science has been in place. So I just wanted you to hear from someone who came here and that traveled thousands of miles to move here for the purity. And again, you were my heroes and my heart is broken. And also the fact that even so many, there's just such heartbreak over all the different public trusts that have been broken with this. And even saying that the cultural protections have been served. I've heard tell that all the examination of the cultural site was done under a great deal of snow. It couldn't have possibly been done. I put that in along with all the other people who have spoken more eloquently of the science of all of this and how this is really a toxic waste in one of the most sacred places on Mother Earth. My name is Deborah Mars. Thank you for sharing this time.
Speakers 13, 14, and 15. Speaker 13, please go directly to one of the two mics. And 14, please consider the chairs designated for the upcoming speakers.
This wasn't made for somebody who used to be five foot 13. So I'll get right down to it.
If you want to take the mic off and hold it, you can do that as well.
Okay, I think I'll leave. My name is Sylvia Lambert. I'm here to talk about making the company prove their request in regard to the safety they claim. NC2 mining for uranium and aquifers in western South Dakota makes no sense from the point of view of highest and best used at any time, but especially these days since water scarcity is no longer a debatable issue. However, if the EPA is considering granting Power Tech Azarga permit for even one waste disposal well, you should seriously consider the following. Require the company to prove that the Minnaluosa Aquifer and other affected aquifers that now supply drinking water are somehow now deemed not suitable for drinking water or any other competing purpose such as agriculture and ranching. Require an independent testing agency. Require the company to identify potential environmental degradation that its activities might cause, including contamination of primary and associated surface and groundwater bodies that might be affected by excursions through fractures and fissures. Require the company to demonstrate that of all the competing interests for water, its project is the highest and best use. We think not. Require all phases of the mining process, procedure to be timely monitored by an independent agency. No self-monitoring. Identify existing remedial technologies and their costs and develop realistic financial parameters for remediation. Require the company to post to the state a bond commensurate with any risk so that we taxpayers aren't stuck paying for what should be the company's responsibility. After all, unlike ordinary taxpayers, the company doesn't even have to pay for the millions of gallons of water they'll be using. Require NEPA, the federal government's environmental review process, to engage in in-depth consultation with all parties protected under the Native American tribal treaties regarding their cultural, health, and environmental interests and concerns, demonstrating in a substance last month that he is setting aside $25 million to protect religious freedom, religious sites, and relics, respecting the right of all people. That includes the Lakota people here. Thank you.
My name is Sarah Peterson and thank you for coming to visit us again, but this is getting old. I ask you not to permit any waste wells to Azarga. They have no money and are asking you to break the law. NEPA is a federal law which requires a cultural assessment to be done in conjunction with the tribes. Azarga wants you to use the cultural assessment they did for the NRC permitting process because they don't have the money to do another cultural assessment. The cultural assessment they did for the NRC was not done with tribal consultation and was ruled by the District of Columbia Courts, grossly lacking and thrown out. Azarga doesn't have the money to fill the nearly 8,000 boreholes on the project site that the NRC made a condition before any activity is started on the site. Now they are asking you to only fill the boreholes around the class four, no, four class five wells. The wells are for nothing stronger than stormwater, storm sewer water. Nobody has the technology to turn uranium tailings and filled with lascivians into stormwater. If Azarga is given the permit for the wells, you, the EPA will require no monitoring wells and there will be no boots on the ground to see what is being put in these wells. The only wells that will indicate toxins will be our wells. The waste wells in the Minnaluosa Aquifer, which is above the Madison, are drinking water here in hot springs. The EPA requires there be crystalline layers between the aquifers. There is no crystalline layer between the Minnaluosa and the Madison. They are again wanting you to break your own policies. Azarga will be able to import toxic waste not only from the United States, but all over the world. Fall River County will become the world's toxic dump. Crowbut, Anderson Ranch, and the Highlands and other In situ leach mines in Wyoming have mined for 20 years on one waste well. Why on earth would you consider four toxic mining waste wells for a company that can't even afford to fill the nearly 8,000 boreholes on this site? It's obvious, it obviously won't be filled with the Dewey-Burdock uranium in situ mine, mining waste. The history of this lethal activity has been done here because of, quote, "as an outcome of the Los Alamos and NAS studies that was formulated of a secret federal policy option, declaring the Four Corners and the Black Hills regions of the Northern Plains as well." This is a quote from a book. "We finally have found the documentation of this being a sacrifice area." And that's what this is. We are collateral damage. And this was done in the interest of the development of energy. And I have this attachment and the sites, the sites, the site and the footnotes where this information came from. I know right now in our history, there are people in power of whom the law, the letter of the law, the rule of law, and the spirit of law has no meaning. It seems Azarga is seizing this moment and banking on the corrupt environment that permeates our government to get something for nothing. I do believe that people that are dedicated, honest, and have integrity who work for the EPA, because they believe in the mission of the EPA. The EPA was formed to protect the people from corporations that are, that were and are still poisoning the water, air, and ground. The poison was and still is killing people and all life. I ask you to do your job, protect us and not the corporations.
My name is Karen Ellison.
Can you talk closer?
Yes. My name is Karen Ellison. The EPA wants to disregard the cultural impact of the proposed Dewey-Burdock uranium mining project and evaluate impacts from only a technical and scientific perspective. The dictionary defines culture as "the customs, art, history, and intellectual achievements of a people or nation." Disregarding indigenous culture in your evaluation is just a perfect reflection of what our American culture has become, putting the almighty dollar, or yuan or ruble in this case, since Azarga is mostly a Chinese and Russian company, ahead of what really matters, what is right, what is safe and good for all. Disregarding indigenous culture in your evaluation shows just how little you know about indigenous culture. Culture is so much more than arrowheads in a field somewhere or an ancient burial site. I'm no expert on it, but I've learned this. Native Americans know, respect the land. Disrespect the land and eventually it could disrespect you, us. That's more than an intellectual achievement of their culture. It's a basic principle of the people and one that ironically and sadly seems to be so very lacking from American culture. You are overlooking so much more than you know by disregarding it. The EPA is responsible for its own cultural and scientific analysis and you can't rely on the NRC's flawed, inadequate, and still tied up in court record on cultural impact of this project. The EPA cannot prove that this project is safe and makes no effort to respect indigenous culture and the earth, so it should deny the permit. Thank you.
Please, speakers 16, 17, and 18. 16, please go directly to one of the two microphones. And 17 and 18, please remain in the chair. And then take a brief break after 16, 17, and 18. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak here. I'm going to speak on a personal level from health issues and educational issues. My name is Donald J. Holtz and I've lived in the Black Hills for about 20 years now. I was in education all my life, basically. And I retired after about 31 years of educational service to special education students. When I started teaching, I worked with handicapped people and disadvantaged people. And I really got a good view of what cripples people and what really affects our lives. And one of our main goals in the American culture is to have life, liberty, and pursue happiness. And many of those rights are, they're guaranteed to us, but we can't always achieve those and especially the disadvantaged and the unhealthy. I was really healthy until I was about 33 years old. I started teaching at Edgemont and the apartments that I was living in had uranium containers placed around it. And this is low-level radiation. And sometimes they say they don't know what low-level radiation does to people. They've had government studies and government books out that tell exactly what low-level radiation does to people. What it did to me basically wrecked my life and my career at the time. I began my first public teaching job at Edgemont and I was in the best shape I'd ever been in my life at 32 going there. And within six months, I was in the worst shape I'd ever been in my life. And all my health problems, can't be blamed on uranium, but my exaggerated problems with allergies and lung problems and all this basically erupted when I lived at Edgemont around those uranium containers that were produced by Silver King Mines and given away free to people to contaminate Edgemont. So anyway, after living there for two years and the last 18 months and really poor health and basically just getting out of bed to go to work and then coming home and going to bed just so I could get through the night and the next day. And that went on for the 18 months. And then I finally, I got another job and my power got a little bit better gradually as I got away from Edgemont and from its Silver Kings uranium containers. So I guess to make the long story short, the government does know what the low-level radiation does to our health. And many of them don't understand that when we're at a lower functioning level, our productivity is lowered and we have more health issues with more of a burden on the insurance that we have to collect. We don't do our jobs as well. And it's just, it's a tough life. And you can't really see how that affects someone unless you walk in their shoes. The last thing I'd like to say is that I have friends from Colorado that they lived here and had a business here. And they helped encase a whole building in Colorado somewhere that Silver King left. that Silver King left that was contaminated, and they, their health went bad after they helped encase this building in cement. So, I just hope that we can have more respect for the land and the people and water resources and the spirit of this land, not just to abuse it and abuse it, but to try to follow some good rules and laws and protect it. That's all I have. Thank you.
I brought Teresa with me, but our numbers are different, but I'd feel more comfortable if she spoke before me. Now, I wanted to shake you guys' hands from my heart, and today I just want to say that these treaties are very important. Treaty laws are supreme laws of land, and this is something that the United States has never honored, they have never honored a treaty. You know, you're all still living on stolen land, don't you? I think you guys need to start recognizing this because it's starting to happen right before your eyes, whether you want to acknowledge it or not. Native people are standing up all over America. I just want you to think about this, okay? So with that, I want to say, how am I talking? Oh, my name is Teresa Blackell.
My name is Jean Wrote. I'm from the Cheyenne River Sioux Tribe. I lived in Rapid City for most of my life. I'm just real concerned because I feel that we've always been ignored, like Teresa and everybody's been talking about our treaties that we have. And if anybody wants to, you know, start a conversation with the Lakota Nation, this would be a great place to do a good faith gesture and honor us. We're tired of being abused, stereotyped, treated as if our words don't mean nothing. But we are here, and a lot of us, we don't speak our language no more. Like I, I've been, my grandparents been to the border, the boarding schools, beaten, and all kinds of terrible things because of our language. But one thing that I do know that we've kept in our hearts is that we have respect for our earth and our water. And I just hope that, well, one thing I want to question is how only a couple people can make a decision for so many people, and you don't even live here. So, our water gets contaminated, you don't have to think about it or drink the water. And if you took a shower here, I wouldn't even think about that, you know, because it's been contaminated since the first uranium spill. And it's proven it hasn't changed much. It's still very toxic. And our water's been ignored, and it's a living being or entity, or water has life. So that when you take water in to nourish your body, you know, we'd like to have clean, pure stuff for our grandchildren. And their grandchildren, we survived this far, you know, where people have been massacred, you know, belittled, whatever, but, you know, I just hope that the rumors about the EPA being controlled by, you know, the 1% billionaires is not true because they don't care, and they'll sell us the water later anyway, and you might have to buy it too. Thank you. My talk ends.
We're going to take a brief 15-minute break. And we can be just before 10:00. And we'll start with Speaker Mike Toobin.
Do you care if I take these and put them in?
Yeah.
We've been missing one or two. I don't know if they all got them.
Just make sure we get them.
Okay.
Yeah, I turned it off.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Like a folding chair or something.
Okay, so none of these really are?
Well, it's just, I need to stop.
Yeah.
Hi, folks. This is Alex with Unicorn Riot. We are here in Hot Springs, South Dakota for an EPA public comment hearing on a proposed Insi Tulech uranium mining project. And the area that this proposed project is located in, there have, there are already abandoned uranium mines there presently that have not yet been fully cleaned up. And so a lot of the folks here at the hearing have been mentioning that, as well as treaty rights not being followed and respected, as well as the National Environmental Protection Act not being complied with. This proposed site also has many contentions against it from the Aglala Sioux Tribe, as well as some landowners near Edgemont where the proposed mining site is. And the company behind this site is Power Tech USA. It's mostly owned by a company based in China, and they have a lot of shareholders all over the world. According to people speaking today, a good chunk of those shareholders are from Russia. So a lot of the uranium is also supposedly going abroad for energy use elsewhere other than the United States. Right now, there's about a 15-minute break in the hearing, and then it's going to go for another about hour and a half. And then after that, there will be a lunch break, and then the hearing will continue from about 2:00 PM Mountain Time till 6:00 Mountain Time, depending on how many speakers there are left. There are two representatives here from the EPA. There's Judge Catherine Hall and Douglas Minter. So those two people are here to hear these public comments. And then there's a person typing notes on the far right. But so this proposed site was first, Power Tech first, applied for a license, a mineral license, in 2009. So this is about a 10-year process of this company trying to mine in this area. They say that there is about 10 million, I believe, pounds of uranium that they can recover from this area. That's their projection. But yeah, so the Aglala Sioux Tribe filed contentions less than a year after Power Tech filed that license application. And even with those contentions along with NEPA not being complied with, the Nuclear Regulatory Commission in June 2014 issued Power Tech USA their materials license. And this EPA hearing is actually the second one, this public comment hearing is the second one for this project. The first one was two years ago, and the EPA took those comments and then changed and transformed these two permits slightly. And so that's why this public comment hearing is concerning the two updated draft permits. And a lot of the people here have been saying that two years ago, they were saying the same things, and it doesn't, to them, it doesn't seem like the EPA is truly listening or hearing their concerns. So, folks will start speaking again in about five to 10 minutes, and then it'll go until about noon Mountain Time. Everyone who's watching, Unicorn Riot really appreciates our audience, and if you appreciate our coverage and this livestream right now, you can go to unicornriot ninja and click on our "Support Our Work" tab, or I think it's our "Donate" tab now. We are a nonprofit, and we really can only do this work and cover issues like this through donations, so we really appreciate it. So yeah, people will begin speaking again here soon. And also, we released a short article on our website, so you can go to unicornriot ninja and read a little bit about this hearing on our website.
Hi. Just had one question. Are you here to represent the press or?
I'm with a press organization.
Okay, that's fine. Could you let us know which one that is?
Unicorn Riot. I can give you a card.
Okay. Card would be great. Yeah, we're just trying to make sure we're aware in case you all have any questions during or after. Okay. Thank you so much. All right.
That was just one of the people from the EPA. He just wanted to ask where I was from.
if she spoke before me.
No. I said, I wanted to shake you guys' hands from my heart, and today I just want to say that these treaties are very important. Treaty laws are supreme laws of land, and this is something that the United States has never honored, they have never honored a treaty. You know, you're all still living on stolen land, don't you? I think you guys need to start recognizing this because it's starting to happen right before your eyes, whether you want to acknowledge it or not.
We're going to commence the hearing in one minute. We're going to go back on the record now. Back us calls speakers 19, 20, and 21, please. Speaker 19, please go directly to one of the two microphones. And speakers 20, 21, you can wait in the chairs at the bottom of the stairs.
Good morning. My name is Eileen Oliger, O-H-L-I-G-E-R. And I'm a resident of Hot Springs. Excuse me, I'm originally from New Jersey. So I'm very familiar with issues of pollution and the effects after Superfund sites have been established. And I'm totally against all of this and anything having to do with the uranium mining. The EPA was established as a protection agency to control pollution and to foresee problems dealing with all levels of environmental decay. To consider all possible negative impacts on human health, taking into consideration all scientific and cultural perspectives, which are very important and must be taken into consideration. To lower costs of cleanup actions, making sure that companies in question have appropriate funding to restore any damage done, not leaving the responsibility on the people after a disaster. Also, to not pass on the grim consequences of the unprevented disasters to our children and their children, to the younger generation. These are all issues and points that were brought up in the beginning, in the 1970s for the EPA. And today, I feel that as a citizen, as a concerned person, as someone who feels that the water is sacred, that we must protect the water, and that these, just these three points brought up, still need to be addressed and are not being addressed. As a citizen and a person, I don't feel, I'm not comfortable with all of this. And I truly believe that eventually, that we don't want to leave a disaster for our children and for future generations. And I don't support anything presently that's going on. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's, can you hear me? My name's Reno Red Cloud. I'm with the Okalala Sioux Tribe Water Resource Department. I am the great-grandson of Chief Red Cloud. I'm the sixth generation. And I just wanted to give some comments today concerning our position with these draft water permits. First of all, I think these draft water permits are coming from the Black Hills Aquifer. And they are a recharge for our aquifers on the reservation, for the Arikiri Okalala Aquifer. So, and then the Cheyenne River is the headwaters for our surface and groundwater. And those are, the sources are interconnected. That's how we believe that they're interconnected, surface and groundwater. I worked with the Region 8 Tribal Water Program. So I have an insight of the Safe Drinking Water Act and the compliance and regulations. And right now, I did, back in about three years ago, there was a deep injection well proposed in South Dakota by the South Dakota School of Mines. And I gave testimony at that, opposing it. And I don't think it ever went anywhere. But I think any type of deep wastewater injection in our homeland, the treaty land, is not acceptable because of our, this is our survival. This is our homeland. This is where we, existence is from, the Black Hills here. So our culture, our livelihood, our survival. I have some notes here, but I have three questions that I did send. I'm just going to read them to you. The question number one was, what triggered the reissuance of the draft 2017 water permits? I know this is just a public hearing, but I just want you to hear my questions. The second one was, when was the decision made to reissue the water permits and by whom? And the third one is, what are the substantive differences between the 2017 and 2019 draft water permits? And the last one is, is there a document that compares the 2017 to 2019 draft water permits? Because our concern is to drill and pull water from these aquifers, the Madison Minnaluza, and then inject the wastewater into the Indian Cara. That's insane. Anything that is a contaminant should not be brought out or put back into the ground. And you know, as a water administrator for the Water Resource Department, I have deep concerns because we're right downstream from the aquifers and the surface water. So all this mining and all this, you know, oil pipelines, everything that's going on now, it's just destroying our planet, destroying our Uchi Mokka. So you know, my concern today with these draft water permits, I know the State of South Dakota Water Management Board is waiting on you guys' decision. But I would like to see you look at our concerns from the environment. Because I know the Environmental Protection Agency, you're supposed to have a source water protection program. And I'd like to see that implemented in these decisions. And you've got different parties involved in this. You've got the State of South Dakota, the federal. But what about our tribal input? That needs to be part of the decision-making process. So what our concerns are today, I would like to have considered and acted upon in this decision of these draft water permits. It's just my concern. And I know that our tribe is going to be looking with EPA for a future consultation too. So that's going to be scheduled. But just, I just have concerns that our culture, our livelihood, our survival is in our water because water is sacred to us. Thank you.
First of all, I would like to address my people who are here. I just told them that in my language, my Lakota name is the last one to return. And that was given to me by my grandmother because my father was in the US military. And out of five brothers, he was the last one who came home from the military. And he died later on. He was in the US Army. And that was my given Lakota name. My English name is Dar Red Hawk. And I'm also Lakota from Pine Ridge, South Dakota, on the reservation. And on my grandmother, my great-grandmother's side, I'm also Northern Cheyenne. And I'm the great-great-great-granddaughter of Crazy Horse. And you know, I just wanted to say that all this poisoning thing that's going on on all lands, especially native land, they're trying to get rid of us, but we're still here. And we are, and our ancestors still live within us. And I'm really proud of that because I'm also, I've also been educated in a white man's world. And there are a lot of us out there natives who have degrees, who teach and who pass our knowledge on to the younger ones. And I'm really proud of Mr. Andrew Cat for bringing his grandkids because they are the next generation who are going to learn about what's been going on on our native lands, as well as that land that doesn't exist on the reservation. And I do a lot of medicinal herbs, like the botanist. But I brought some plants and herbs here that I study. And through my great-grandfather and some uncles of mine, they taught me the study of plant life. I have five plants here that grow within the Black Hills and the reservation lands. And one time out of every year, we go to harvest these. This is, it's called, you call it kyniknik. And it's the bark in the inner layer of the choke cherry tree that we dry and we smoke in our pipes. It's non-chemical. There's no chemicals in it. It's natural. And my grandfather used to say, when you smoke that, you smoke it with reverence and respect to Mother Earth. And there's actually healing properties in all these plants. And he says, the kyniknik, if you smoke it without the medicinal, without the chemicals in it, it has a healing power for your lungs and your upper gastric system. And I also have sage. And a lot of you do use sage. I know a lot of cooking. For us, we make tea out of it. And that's also good for your upper gastric and your gastrointestinal. And those of you who don't understand, that means your esophagus, that goes onto your stomach. And we smudge, I don't know if any of you know what smudge is. What we do is, when we get up in the mornings, we pray with it for good, for our health, for the health of the people. And that helps, we believe that chases away the bad spirits and help us be more focused. But it's in the belief system, it's in our belief system that this works for us. Another one is cedar. And cedar also works the same as sage. We burn it and we make tea of it. And I used to live in Southern Illinois where it's really humid. And with my plant, with my study of plants and herbs, I got to know a lot of plants and herbs everywhere I went. And I suffer with a lot of allergies now to the environment, to the earth, just different things that, the poisonous things that's put into our earth comes up, in the water, whatever you eat, the animals, the food, the vegetation life. Well, I came home one time and I used to really abuse Benadryl. Benadryl is good for allergies, for hives, whatever, in the white man's world. I'm sorry I have to use that term. And so I went to a ceremony and my uncle gave me this herb. He said, use this. He said, I'll show you how to use it and when to use it. And this herb, when you burn it, you let it burn until it fizzes out and then you inhale the smoke a little, hold it, and breathe it back out. Just a couple of seconds and it's good for allergies. It clears my head. I have sinusitis. I don't know if you can tell by my voice, but it really helps. And I've never gone to the, I go to the hospital, but I haven't gone to the hospital for any allergy pills because of this. And we use it sparingly. All the plants and plant life that we use, we use it sparingly. Works with that, it won't work for us because plants are our powerful medicine. You have to believe in it. And that's where the pharmaceutical people get their knowledge from, is our plants. You know, and I hate to say it, but even pharmaceutical companies abuse our land. They add chemicals to things that would make this even more powerful, but they give it to you in milligrams, in drops. Whereas the real thing works a lot better because it's not powered up. It's not powered down. It's just natural the way it is. You know, and I just wanted to bring this to your attention because if you kill the planet, if you kill our water, this also goes. And you'll lose your pharmaceutical stuff. None of the plants and herbs are going to work for even people out there who need it. And incidentally, the aquifers, seven states rely on this aquifer. And if you kill these aquifers, you're going to kill plant life, even the food you eat. Nebraska, Kansas, Missouri, they are all fully agricultural places. They grow the corn, the wheat. What about the beef? I know a lot of us are beef eaters. And some of us are vegetarians or wannabe or whatever. But just think, if you kill the water, you kill everything, yourself eventually. Like the gentleman who was up here. He said he got sick because of trainings. I know you guys probably sit up there in DC high and mighty because you don't know what our life is like downstream, you know? I just want to bring that to your attention because with the study of plant life, medicinal herbs, there's a lot of us who still live this way. And I'm proud to say that I'm one of them. And we have elderly at home, young children we teach. We're teaching our language back to the children. Thank you for our elderly who are here who can do that for us before everything is lost. Plant life, the cattle, the food we eat. Well, I just wanted to bring this to everybody's attention because this is my concern also, is our medicinal herbs. Thank you for listening to me.
Hello, my name is Foxy Onefeather. And I live in Lower Brule, South Dakota, which is the home of the Kowachashaw Yate. And I'm not coming with like data, facts, or anything. But because we all know that what's happening here is toxic to the people, the animals, the plants, the air, the water. You guys probably don't care because it doesn't affect you directly, but it affects our people. Not only are you not upholding the treaties, but you're not taking into consideration that the Black Hills is sacred, period. And I just want to say that just leave it alone. Just leave it alone. Just leave it alone. That's it.
My name is Julie Santella. I have a bunch of things to say because I have a lot of concerns about the hundreds of pages of these draft permits. One important thing to say is that the EPA is requesting information on traditional cultural properties, on potential adverse effects to traditional cultural properties per Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act. If that is true, then these draft permits should not have been issued prior to meaningful tribal consultation taking place, period, period. So I can't believe that you're actually concerned about that because that's the case. The second thing that is really concerning is that in these documents, you say that the Nuclear Regulatory Commission's review of cultural resources appears sufficient. The Atomic Safety Licensing Board disagrees with you. The DC District Court of Appeals disagrees. The DC District Court of Appeals disagrees with you. The NRC's analysis of cultural resources has been deemed illegal. And so it doesn't give me a lot of confidence in the EPA that your documentation doesn't reflect that. The third thing that I wanted to raise is that the EPA can't just consider impacts to underground sources of drinking water or effects to human health from a scientific perspective or from a legal perspective. You also ask for feedback on your environmental justice analysis, which I have a lot to say about and I'll be providing written comments. But one of the things that I have concerns about is that the EPA is trying to say that treaties, that we acknowledge that treaties exist and that we acknowledge the Black Hills as a sacred site, but that those issues are separate from the scientific considerations of threats to underground sources of drinking water. There's a lot of things to say about that, but one thing is that that's illegal, that the EPA can't separate those things out. And that's by your own law. So the last thing I want to do is just read out to you a few regulations under your own system of law that requires you to consider issues of treaty and issues related to culture and spiritual significance. The National Historic Preservation Act, Section 101d6b, requires any federal agency, that includes the EPA, to consult with any Indian tribe or Native Hawaiian organization that attaches religious and cultural significance to historic properties that may be affected by an undertaking. That is this project. Executive Orders 13007 and 13175 require the federal government to honor treaty rights and avoid any action that may adversely affect access to ceremonial use of or the physical integrity of sacred sites. That also applies to this project and the EPA is bound by those orders. Article 6 of the US Constitution says that treaties remain the supreme law of the land. The Supreme Court in 1980 ruled that the US government indeed violated the 1851 and 1868 Fort Laramie treaties and stole this land. I don't think any of those laws have asterisks behind them that say, you know, these apply, but if an agency decides that they don't want to abide by them, then they don't have to. That's not true of any of these. National Historic Preservation Act, executive orders, the US Constitution, Supreme Court law, the NRC's decision, the DC Court of Appeals, the EPA is not allowed to ignore, this is your own system of law that holds you to these things. So I wanted to remind you today that you all have obligations and that if you continue to fail to fulfill those obligations, then we will be here to remind you of them.
I'm from Ogalllo on the Pioneer of the Revolution. I too experienced cast of boarding school in the system. But I'm here from what I learned. My great grandfather's name is Ohitika. My great grandfather's name is Ohitika. He negotiated the Treaty of 1868 at Fort Laramie on April 29th on behalf of Mahbi Aluta, Red Cloud. Okay, the Fort Laramie Treaty of 1868 is a nation-to-nation peace treaty. Yet in 1876, the United States sent the Seventh Cavalry after our people in violation of that treaty that was ratified on February 16th, 1869, and proclaimed on February 24th, 1869. This marks 150th anniversary of a treaty that we are sovereign, our people are sovereign within this treaty territory, which starts from the mouth of the Missouri River, crosses the part of Wyoming. All the rivers are within treaty territory. They went to the south of the Platte River in Nebraska, all the way to what is now known as Omaha and Council Bluffs. And went back up on the east bank of the Missouri River, all the way back to the mouth of the Missouri. And then Mahbi Aluta declared war against the United States because people were coming across from the east, going west. And when he stood on a ridge, which is at a place called Story in Wyoming, I was there. I seen that, where he stood with his people and watched the whiting trains going west, but none were going back east. So he knew at that point that these people who were going in that direction, there had to be more coming from the east. That's when he declared war, that's when he laid out his treaty territory. And he wanted a nation-to-nation treaty. He wanted us to have our own country so that we would have exclusive use of it. And there's other things in the treaty. And yet when this treaty was taken back to Washington DC, the people who came, the commissioners who came, stopped in Chicago, Illinois, and doctored. One of the articles in that treaty is, Red Cloud would allow the United States to come and get gold out of the Black Hills since it was important to the non-Indian people. And he said on one condition, that half of the gold that was taken out of the Black Hills would be placed in special appropriations for our seventh generation. And yet, seven years later, on June 26th, 1876, the United States violated that so-called peace treaty. The Fort Laramie Treaty says it's a peace treaty that our nation and your nation would never go to war. So they violated that. When our people, Biedkuster, Reno, Benteen, and Crook, and Little Big Horn, when they returned to their homelands where they were in charge of protecting the treaty territory, soldiers were waiting and we became prisoners of war. So for 143 years, our people have been prisoners of war on these places you call reservations. Those are prison camps. When that treaty was ratified on February 16th and proclaimed on February 24th, 1869, which marked the 150th anniversary, it was a time for our people to take back that sovereignty, to take back that treaty territory. This is our land. And all of you people who live within it are innocent of your own history that the United States chose not to put in your books. So you get in this history. And what I'm hearing about is all the people that live within our treaty territory are affected. You are part of our people and who we are. You, the farmers and ranchers who put the food on the table that the people eat, just wasted on the grocery shelves across this country. And when you work, you work 24/7. You don't get paid by the hour. Cows don't have their calves between 8 o'clock and 5 o'clock. My dad was a rancher, we know that. And you farmers and ranchers know that. You're out there, late at night, farming your crops, putting those crops to the processing plants which exist in Colorado. Like Darlene said, this aquifer feeds eight states in this country called Ogalllo Aquifer. The Black Hills itself has five iglu's under the Iyankara, they call it Iyankara. And it affects all the people within this area. And I'm glad we're here in Hot Springs because that one time Iyinku was known as the leukemia capital of the world. So many of the children there were dying of leukemia. And you don't hear about it anymore. That's another piece of history that's not in the books. But we know about it because our people worked in Iyinku. And 2015, 20 years later, our people started getting cancer, dying of uterine cancer, liver cancer, you name it. Women and men worked there. And they passed this on if they could get cancer. Young women were losing their children because something was wrong with you. Your body would naturally reject the body, the baby. So something was wrong with these children that were avoided, self-avoided. That's nature, taking care of its own. And we steal the suffering from the effects of all this contamination. And they came here before. And they get into that aquifer, what they're going to do is pump that water back in. They say it's going through some kind of system where they're going to change it back, but nobody can change it back to its original form. So when people out there outside of treaty territory, when their food starts disappearing off the shelves, when the food prices go up and we're facing a major food shortage, it's because our waters are being poisoned. Our people, our animals, our children, we will all start watching things die. Water is sacred. I went to a water summit in Rapid City at the Ranquota. And I was really, really proud of the young people, young native people, young indigenous people who put it on to tell the people that water is sacred. And this is what we were protecting here, this is what we were protecting at Standing Rock. This is what we were born for, to always remember with the Seventh Generation is who we are protecting it for. And you are Seventh Generation, for all the people who live in the Black Hills area on reservations and who are teachers. And whoever you are are innocent of this treaty. Now you know that what I am going to do is file a suit against the United States of America and its entities. And I have a little, I should know, but the head is the United States, the body is the Department of Interior, which was the Department of War, changed to the Department of Interior. And the people you see here are truly innocent because they weren't told any of this either about the treaties. But there's eight entities which are the legs of the spider, which is the United States. The US Army Corps of Engineers, the US Environmental Protection Agency, Department of Environmental Natural Resources, US Nuclear Resource Agency, the Bureau of Indian Affairs, US Forest Service, US National Park Service, Bureau of Land and Management. And I'm charging them with treason against their own country for working with foreign entities and representing it, they're corroborating with our enemy. They're working for a foreign country using the United States laws, violating our treaties. I'm working on getting my United States passport. No laws here can affect us, colonial laws or colonial laws. We are a nation here, sovereign nation here. And these people are sitting here attempting to get more resources out of our land. Today, on behalf of the people who live within treaty territory, I'm saying, no, it cannot happen. It will not happen. So after this, I'm getting ready to put this all together, go to Geneva and fire in court because this is not a colonial issue, this is not a federal issue. This is a nation issue. Pidamla.
The ready for speakers 25, 26, and 27, please. 25 can go directly to one of the two bikes.
Good morning. My name is Karen Little Thunder. I live in Rapid City and I am a part of the Rosebud Sioux Tribe. I am here to offer my comments in opposition to the uranium mining. What I want to say is that you, the Environmental Protection Agency, must consider the negative impacts to all health, human and animal, as well as from a scientific and technical perspective, both of which I want to address quickly. My name, like I said, is Little Thunder, Wakia Chikala. And my family status can be traced, my bloodline can be traced back into the mid-1500s. So this is my perspective as a Lakota woman. The Chesapa, the Black Hills and its waters are life. The hills are the good health of our future generations, both yours and ours. Scientifically speaking, the Lakota presence here in the Black Hills is proven way back into the year 16B.C. We Lakota people, all indigenous people, have protected this land and sustained ourselves in good health since the time of our creation. This land is our good health, this water is our good health, ours and yours. And when I say from creation, I'm talking about Iyanka. I've heard many of our people bring this name of Iyanka because that's where mining is already happening. Iyanka is the place of our creation. And we have sustained ourselves here in the Black Hills, on Black Hills water, since that time. Our grandchildren and our children are depending upon us to make good decisions for their well-being, for their very lives, because water is life, many of which one. Thank you for allowing me this time to comment.
I'm from eastern South Dakota. And I guess the first thing I'd like to say is I call on the EPA to deny these permits, full stop. I'll also say that I'm the Director of Dakota Rural Action, statewide grassroots group. You've already heard from some of our members and you'll hear from more. And the reason I say that is because it gives me the opportunity to talk to a lot of people. And yesterday I talked to a farmer from Hulliburts, South Dakota, 40 miles east of the Missouri River. And he told me about a well their family has, an Artisan well, 1,900 foot deep. The important thing is the source of the water for that well is the Black Hills, hundreds of miles from Hundreds of miles from the Black Hills, 1,900 foot deep. Their water is coming out under its own pressure, tremendous pressure. He said that if it's unregulated, it will produce hundreds of gallons a minute. And the water comes up warm, warm enough to keep cattle waters ice-free in South Dakota winters. And we act like we understand what's going on under the earth. To me, this is science fiction. Incredible. And we act like we know what we're doing. We don't. You have no idea. And we need to just listen to the wisdom that's been here speaking to you and say no. Thank you.
Greetings relatives. I'd like to first start by greeting each and every one of you with a warm and heartfelt handshake. My name is Terrell Ironshell and my Lakota name is Defends the Water. I am from the Oyukbe Band of the Oglala Lakota, otherwise known as Crazy Horses Band. I am a father, a community organizer, a nonviolent direct action trainer, and a representative from the International Indigenous Youth Council. First off, I would like to acknowledge that this is indigenous land under Article 6 of the U.S. Constitution, under our treaties. I would like to just remind you that you are our guests and we're still the hosts. That being said, the indigenous concerns about the pollution to the water and the use not only for drinking water but for ceremonial use is preposterous that we even have to be standing here talking about the importance, the cultural importance of our water. Because not only do we need it to survive here whenever we're alive, you know, it's what is provided to the plants to make use of our bodies after we're gone. And also it is what we are surrounded in, in the womb. Clean water is a basic human right that our children are entitled to. They're the ones who are gonna inherit this world from us. And it's selfish to put their futures on the line for profits and to line the pockets of a select few individuals and corporations. Historically, we have never received any justice from past mining endeavors coming from corporations, blatant disregard for indigenous people's health, and also from the shortcomings of our government and agencies to help protect and keep our water clean. I am a father of a six-year-old. She comes to these things with me. She goes all over with me. And so she's starting to see the work that we do, the importance of water and sovereignty and how those two things intertwine. Our water right now stands in the face of danger. And that we are here to make sure that you guys are held. The ways that this society and this government are running, their futures and their lives are not taken into consideration. If you really want to help our people, then I call upon you, landowners, to hand over the deeds of your land to our children. Because not only is land integral to the growth of our nation, but also the connection to the land is what really sustains us and it grounds us. And so having land back in our control that we would have the autonomy to decide to do what we please, it would greatly affect our youth and help to drop the suicide rates because it would help to give our youth a sense of pride in the fact that they are on the land that we had traditionally inherited from our ancestors. Our youth are tired of standing silent while older people make decisions for us. And as you can see, youth all over the country and youth all over the world are starting to stand up for their futures. That being said, should these permits go through, we have one thing to say. Respect us or expect us.
Hi, my name is Tatiana Novikova and I am New American. I am immigrant. I came here from Belarus, from dictatorship country.
Do you speak loud?
Yeah, I could speak louder. I have lived here in Black Hills about five years. And I consider myself environmental refugee because I consider myself Chernobyl victim. You know about Chernobyl. I am cancer survivor. I am Chernobyl victim. I am victim of persecution by my government because my government is dictatorship. And I was persecuted. I was fighting for my environmental rights on the United Nations Tribune. I initiated three cases on the United Nations, in United Nations, against my government because my government was violating my human rights, my environmental rights. I won all of them. But I am here because I do not want to stay in the country. I do not want to poison my body anymore. During decades, 20 years, I was studying in Academy of Sciences of Belarus the effects of low-dose exposure of radiation. And now we know that, for example, my two cases of cancer are initiated by this situation of being exposed by low-dose radiation. I am very pleased of that in the United States here, I see the same thing I see in my country. When governmental body just neglect, literally neglects their duties and violates rules. It was told a lot about all the violations. I have nothing to add. I will add in written form and I will explain where violations are. But I wouldn't complain and I wouldn't say shame on you. I should say shame on you because I see dictatorship right here, dictatorship of corporations and administration, contemporary administration of the United States. And you following them but not the rules. I would tell, I would demand, please withdraw draft permission and start procedure again. Start the procedure completely following your own rules. Complete, please, the consultation, tribal consultation you need to complete. And please do assessment. You have professionals. You have professionals of high level in your agency who knows about impacts of waters, impacts of ISL methods. Because you put solution, you put uranium solution into the water, directly into the water, and you know that. And you could study this as you should. And this is my demand. So also I would add that I have no place to run away, no place on this earth. And I would have to defend this place as my new home. Thank you.
That's a tough speaker to follow. And unfortunately, I have to read what I wrote here. I didn't have time to print it out. So I will read through the tears in my eyes. And I will send my written comments on the website because I don't have them printed out. My name is Dr. Andy Johnson. I live in Spearfish, South Dakota. I'm a physics educator. My expertise is in how to teach radiation literacy. I care about the health of Americans, present and future, including those living in the southern Black Hills. And there are people there. I understand that the health of the ecosystem trumps any human interests because the ecosystem is bigger than we are. We are merely members of it. So we are responsible for taking care of it. I'm descended from European immigrants who didn't understand the existing ways of Native Americans. I'm a white man who recognizes that now is the time that we acknowledge that we're sitting, literally sitting on land that belongs to natives. This is unceded treaty land from the Treaty of 1868. To propose the ISL mine is also part of these tribal lands. Because it has not taken the treaty into account, EPA's permitting process is in violation of federal law. Thus, the EPA is legally obligated to withdraw its draft permits and restart by negotiating with the native nations that hold this land. According to law, the EPA must consider all potential future impacts of the proposed activities on this site, be they mining or possibly waste disposal. Looking into the future, we have to anticipate the stresses of climate change. Higher temperatures and more profound droughts will increase the need for groundwater. The water in this proposed mine area is being used already by inhabitants and it will be needed by our children and grandchildren and following generations. Has the EPA taken this additional need into account in the permitting process? No Insiachi leach mine has ever returned a mined aquifer to its original condition. If this mine is permitted, the aquifers will be damaged and they will be contaminated. Testimony today has exposed many questions about how the mining company will ever be able to ensure the quality of the aquifers and there's serious doubt about that. Over a long enough time, however, eventually, these aquifers should return to their original condition or at least to a level where they would be usable again. But how many decades or how many centuries will it take for this to happen? Does anyone even know? What if the waste disposals are used for toxic waste? Then what? Finally, we know that any exposure to radionuclides introduces mutations into a population. Some of the mutations will have health costs. We can't estimate. These costs will be borne by Americans for many generations. In 1955, Nobel Laureate Herman Mueller estimated that the genetic burden due to deleterious radiation-induced mutations will take between 20 to 40 generations to clear from the gene pool. Has the EPA taken a realistic estimate of this health burden into account? So I'm coming here today to say that the EPA must withdraw the permits that are the subject of these hearings and begin the process with full regard to tribal sovereignty, to the known upcoming challenges of climate change, and realistic considerations of the health of affected populations. Thank you for listening.
In the hills, I want to thank all the eloquent testifiers and science who keep us all going. So I cannot thank the EPA because I think it's quite likely that they will ignore the science that's been presented to them today. I think based on their recent record, we know that they will ignore native treaty rights. We can be pretty certain that they will ignore the spiritual rights of our native relatives. We can be pretty certain that they are ignoring the likely fact that Azarga is trying to do a backdoor waste injection well situation in the southwest hills. Knowing that the EPA has not been our friend in recent years, fails to listen to the science, fails to listen to tribal members who assert their treaty rights. Knowing all of this, I have to ask, I wonder how Mr. Winter, Minter, and Ms. Hall, I have to ask how you sleep at night? I have to ask that question. How do you sleep at night? Fortunately, I have a suggestion for you. You can become a person of conscience and integrity. You can start to organize your fellow scientists in your agency who know that what is being done is wrong. You can become a person of integrity. You can take some risks, just like our relatives at Standing Rock, risk their lives to protect the water. You, Mr. Minter, and you, Ms. Hall, take some risks in your life, protect our water.
It was a bit difficult to hear you there. My name is Dr. Lilius Jarding. I am among other things a PhD in environmental policy. And I also come to you today as President of Clean Water Alliance. You will have full written comments from me before the December deadline. First things first, cultural resources must be protected. EPA's attempts to remove consideration of cultural and spiritual issues is illegal. You also should not piggyback on an insufficient Nuclear Regulatory Commission process that has been declared insufficient by a federal appeals court. Second, the treaties have been talked about in detail. And I will not add any details except to say that the treaties must be respected. Full tribal consultation you have scheduled is my understanding. However, it should have been done before the 2017 draft permits. And it should be respected and put into action. It should come first. You may or may not be aware that after 1874, there was a minerals rush in the Black Hills as a result of General Custer coming into the area. We are experiencing this again in the Black Hills and we are on guard. We have feast and famine with water use here, or water availability here. Sometimes it's drought and creeks and even rivers run dry. There's a creek by my home that runs dry periodically. Or we get too much water. At the Dewey Burdock site, there was a freight train that was washed off of the tracks via water in recent years. All this has ties to the groundwater. The groundwater and the surface water are connected. And I would say that there's too much uncertainty in the water system in this area to be approving permits. Next, the underground water in the proposed mining area is underestimated in government documents. The speed is said to be very slow. However, Dr. Perry Ron, who will hopefully provide written comments also, who is sort of the dean, not sort of, he is the dean of hydrology in the Black Hills, has done some research that indicates that the water moves very quickly in the proposed permit area. The Minna Lusa aquifer is also used for domestic supply near the proposed mining area. The water should be tested in that aquifer to see its quality by a third unbiased party before any permit is considered.
before any permit is considered further. Next, an exemption which you are proposing would assume that the water in the aquifers would never be used or needed. This is a semi-arid area. In addition to groundwater issues in some places, the Cheyenne River, which is our main surface water, is contaminated by uranium mining and milling in the past and by continued open uranium mines. Two aquifers would be contaminated by this project. Note that I don't trust mass reverse osmosis processing, which is proposed for the Minnaluca. So the question becomes, where do we get water in 20 or 30 or 100 years? There's only one solution in my mind, and that is to keep uranium in the ground and to deny the permits. I wrote a poem in 1980, and I still feel the same way. "The Black Hills are at my back and protect me, as here I make my stand." (applause)
This is new for me. This is, my name is Steve Stewart. Everyone calls me Stu. I'm from Lead. My hat says Navy. Fifty-two years ago, I gave this country a blank check. And I'm looking out in the audience, and I'm sure I have brothers and sisters that did the same thing, supporting our constitution, of which I heard Article 6 is protected. Please make my oath and my blank check honorable. Do the right thing. Thank you.
(applause)
My name is Margaret King. I'm here primarily today as a grandmother of seven people ranging in age from 20 to I'm also here as a friend of the Lakota people, with whom I have been very closely associated most of my life. A cousin of one of my best childhood friends, Steve Littlethunder spoke here earlier. Karen Littlethunder, thank you, Karen. I'm also here as an attorney. I am licensed to practice law in the state of Iowa and on Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. I'm also admitted into several federal courts, including the United States Supreme Court. I have been to Geneva to fight for indigenous rights before the Human Rights Commission. I will go again. Next time, I plan to go to fight for the rights of protesters. I have been protesting nonviolently in the streets since 1968. I have protested here along with my Lakota relatives against DAPL and against this law that was to take the rights away, the First Amendment rights away from all of us who wish to defend the water. I'm not going to stop now, even if I have to be pushed to the sites in a wheelchair. The case that was referred to earlier, the United States Supreme Court case, which declared that the Black Hills were illegally taken from the Lakota people, is the United States versus the Sioux Nation of Indians. The site for that case is 448 U.S. 371, decided in 1980. They also ruled that the Sioux Nation should have reparation and interest from the year of 1877. However, that money is being held in trust. Not one penny of it has been accepted because the Black Hills are not for sale. So one of the most important things I have learned from my Lakota relatives is this concept of metaklyassen, meaning we are all related. It doesn't mean that we are all related as two-legged entities on the earth. We are also all related to the four-legged, the winged creatures in the sky, the fish in the rivers and the lakes. We are all related to the trees and the forests and the grass on the prairies and the medicinal plants that will be destroyed if the water is destroyed. The water is the source of all of our life. The water and our mother earth. So I guess that's really all I have to say. I do have another little note here, that South Dakota became a state in 1889. So that means our Lakota brothers and sisters were placed in prisoner war camps before South Dakota was a state. I believe the number for Pine Ridge is 344 PL camp. Does anybody know? I maybe have the number wrong, but they all have numbers, and they're all prisoner of war camps. Oh, I did think of something more to say. When I go to various events on Pine Ridge, I make it a point to listen more than I talk. And at the funeral of a young suicide victim, I learned from one of his older relatives that in the Dewey Burdock area, which by the way is part of the land that has been ruled by the United States Supreme Court as being unlawfully taken, I learned from her that in the 50s or 60s, a person went exploring in this area, a white person went exploring in this area and came upon some places where Lakota people had camped after the genocide tactic of smallpox and the blankets had been employed against them. And this person disturbed a burial site and came down with smallpox. But it's, it's a hidden history. It's, there's probably not a record of it anywhere, but the people know. And so if you poison the water that goes onto the reservations, which are actually prisoner of war camps, that would be a continuation of the genocide, and I hope you decide against that. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. I don't know, I truly don't know why you're here. You're listening to our comments and our concerns here. You were here in 2017, and there's more people here then, and we're still here. So I don't understand truly why you're here. You're supposed to be protecting the people, and I'm not going to attack the proponents, or I'm not going to attack anyone who's for it or against it. I'm on the side of life, in my life. I drink this water. And this water is inherent right in every living thing, even the people who are going to be mining. Okay? They don't have to live here after they're, after they're gone. We do. And anger isn't working. Anger only makes you ugly. Okay? I'm on a path of spiritual freedom. And that freedom tells me I'm responsible for my actions, as every living thing is. And that's what the law is supposed to do for us, is hold us accountable. You know, when the laws of our heart are written down to be followed, it's, it's been destroyed already. Because what's in our hearts is what's really important. Now, I had a big speech here to attack you guys, and I didn't want to do that. Because that's not going to work. And we live in a war in the universe. There's no denying that. There's always going to be a war somewhere. Now, that war has to be fighting for life, not to destroy it. It's hard. Because I feel powerless against your people. We all do. We gave you this Senate Bill 158 in 2011. The people who want to mine went there ahead of time to remove the obstacle of getting their permits first. And it worked. That's our representatives supposed to be representing us. It didn't represent me, because that's not what I would have done. And I know, judging by all the people talking here today, it didn't represent your thoughts and feelings. And, and your science, I mean, science has become, there's good science, there's bad science, there's, it's, it's a world dichotomy, it's left and right. But the only science that we should be concerned of is the science that protects us. Not this Franken-science that's creating new elements that we don't even know how to control. I saw on a business card of a survivalist trainer. He says, "Mother Nature first provides the test and then the lesson." Well, let's not fail this test. We have, we can stop it right now. You know, the cost to mine, refine, burn, and eliminate radioactivity is too great. Mother Nature has put it in the ground safely, relatively safely away from us. It's not harming us right now. But when we refine it down, we make it more powerful. And that power is something we cannot control, no matter how smart you think you are. It will not work. We have Fukushima, Chernobyl. And if you want to talk economics, over $250 billion worth of economic loss in Fukushima. And that's just money. We can't drink money. And I'm going to give you something today that may help you in your fight for your And I'm not representing anyone but myself right now in life, because I can't do that. You have to do that for yourselves. That's what this constitution is supposed to support. It's a word. And it's a chant. And it's there to open your heart to the love that the Creator has for you. It loves the people who want to mine, and it loves the people who don't want them to mine. But it's got to affect something, and it'll fill your heart with love. Because we have a choice to accept that love or to be a negative proponent and hate life. A word is hue, and it's pronounced like this. Sing it with reverence for it. It's non-denominational. It doesn't mean you're a part of my path. We're part of all the same road leading home to the Creator. We're all on that journey. Even the miners, and even the people who want this, everybody. It is indiscriminate, and it loves everybody. Thank you.
(applause)
Hey, everyone. This is Alex with Unicorn Riot. The first session of the EPA public comment hearing in Hot Springs, South Dakota, just ended. There is going to be a two-hour lunch break, and then this is going to start up again at 2:00 PM Mountain Time. And depending on how many speakers are left over, it could go until 6:00 PM Mountain Time. It's unclear right now how long it will actually go. We heard from a lot of people. Many people mentioned the 1868 and 1851 treaties that are not being respected and being complied with. Folks mentioned the National Environmental Protection Act, also known as NIPA, that is also not being complied with. Folks said that the first permits that the EPA drafted two years ago shouldn't have even been drafted because of these non-compliance issues. The proposed uranium mine that this EPA public comment hearing is talking about is called the Dewey Burdock Uranium Mine in Edgemont, South Dakota. And on that same site, there are at least two abandoned uranium mines that have not been fully cleaned up. So that site is still currently contaminated. And this company, Power Tech USA, wants to use In situ recovery uranium mining, where they drill boreholes into an aquifer and pump like a chemical solution in there, and then that releases the uranium ore out of sediment, and they suck it back up. And they also want to pump treated uranium waste into another aquifer. So those two processes are what is being talked about today. The EPA did a renewed draft for both of those. The first was in 2017, and then they had a public comment hearing then. And through those comments, they edited the permits and resubmitted them. So that's why this hearing is happening today. And so yes, there's a lunch break right now. The continued hearing will happen at 2:00 PM Mountain Time. We'll be back live during the next session. If you appreciate our coverage of this public hearing, you can go to unicornriot ninja and click on our donate tab. You can also check out our website to see an article, a short article written about this hearing. We'll continue to cover it and provide you with updates as they are available. Thank you so much for watching.